Welcome. It is six thirty-one and I call the meeting of the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee and our public hearings for this evening to order on Thursday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two at, I think I said, six thirty-one P. M. Before we get started, I want to let everyone know that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. Mr. Tracy, do I, is our Zoom up and running?
It is.
Okay. So, for those of you who are watching on Zoom, we are going to have two public hearings, one on school choice and then one on the FY twenty-three budget. And then we are going to also have citizens comments, all of which will be available. People will be able to participate via Zoom or live and in person. After that, after the public comments, the Zoom link will be closed and there'll be no more opportunity for the public to participate, but you can continue to watch again on H W Cam livestreamed on YouTube. Okay. Okay. So, first up, as again, as I said, we have two opportunities to speak in two different public hearings, so I ask you to make sure that if you're speaking, that you're speaking on the topic at hand. So, the first topic we have is the school choice for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. And I guess I will ask you, just like we always do for public comment, I ask you to limit your comments to three minutes and know that this is an opportunity for your voice to be heard so that we here on the school committee can know what you're thinking about this topic. All right, we can start with, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on school choice?
Can I have a point of order?
Um, thank you, Michelle.
So, our policy on public hearing says that there will be a presentation to give information to the public about the topic prior to the speaking, so are we going to have that first?
Okay. Let me think for a brief moment. We can do that, certainly. Yeah, I had, thank you for that point of order. I had not intended doing it in that order, but I can, we can certainly move that from lower in the agenda. So, Eric, can you go ahead and do that?
Is this for school choice or what? Are we doing school choice?
School choice, correct.
Yeah, so I gotta, I gotta unplug now.
All right.
Hold on. You're behind.
The screen display is taunting us with thoughts of flying somewhere.
I know. Thank you. It's more serene. I don't know, I just want to go there, though.
I do not want to go there.
I have no time to go there.
Although we did, sunrise today was, sunset today was like that.
It was pretty forgetful.
There we go. All right, so each year, the school committee is required to make a vote to either approve the school choice program or not approve it. It has to be done by June of that year, of the current year, so two thousand twenty-two, we always do ours now so that we can start, if we choose to keep, it's a school choice program, so we can start our lottery in February. We have to advertise, put the information out to the public, get the lottery set up, take the incoming people who are signing up and then run a lottery. It's an actual physical lottery that's done where you draw the names from the hat, there's a secretary that records it, and the whole thing is videoed each year. Last meeting, I presented this information that we received from the middle and the high school, and this basically outlines the current school choice. There are currently seventy-seven in the high school and you can see the numbers are a little bit lower in the middle school. Middle school generally doesn't take a lot of kids. Most of our kids get into the choice program right in, as they enter freshman year at the high school. So, that's where we generally get a pretty good bump and based on our usual, people who opt out of coming to the high school and go to a private school, the vocational school, or another independent option, then that leaves spaces available. And generally, we've been running in the past few years, generally, we're running right around fifteen students per year, so that's where you see these numbers. In some years, they're higher, some years, they're lower. Last year, there were twenty-eight people that applied. They were, we went through every single person offering spots and we ended up with thirteen filled out of the fifteen. So, we don't always fill all the spots, but we give them the option. So, we generally have to wait to see what the signups are and then we're also, at the same time, like right now, we start tracking which kids are applying to places like Saint John's Prep, the Voke, you know, and it's interesting, this year, there are thirty-one students who are applied to the Voke. And that's a big number, given the class is only, I think, a hundred and twenty kids or so, right around that number. So, that, the techs, the Votech offers three seats for each community, Hamilton and Wenham, generally. Sometimes, if they have openings, if someone drops and there's a program space, they will pull a kid, a kid in partly through the year or into a specific program, like if there's an opening in their, you know, their biotechnology program, they will take a student to fill that opening and they do that with a similar process. So, anyway, the school choice program has been ongoing since before my time. It's been consistent, this is my ninth year, and tonight, the committee will vote to either have school choice or not have school choice, and that's the only thing we need to vote on at tonight's meeting. So, those are the numbers and that's what it looks like for, for our school choice currently, and then I'll take any questions or if you want to move further.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, again, the public hearing, we're just going to hear from people who are wanting to speak on the school choice. So, if there's anyone in the room who would like to speak on school choice, please approach the podium. All right. And please give us your name and spell your last name for us and your address before you begin.
My name's Patty Lynch and I'm, last name is L Y N C H, and I'm actually a Beverly resident and my son actually is a school choice student, so I think I can speak if I'm okay.
Please, please speak.
I'm in Beverly on Hale Street. And just as a school choice parent, I just want to say it was a wonderful transition into, he transitioned into Miles River in the year of our Lord, the pandemic, and it was a really good transition for him and the school did an excellent job, and he's very happy at Hamilton-Wenham. And as a member of like the wider community, I think the school choice program is an important one for bringing different voices into schools, filling seats, obviously, it's always a good thing, but I just wanted to say for a moment how positive an experience it was for my son, is for my son, and it's been great.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Tracy, do we have any members on Zoom, any citizens on Zoom who would like to offer comment on school choice?
I'll ask right now. If there's anybody on the Zoom for the school committee meeting that would like to comment about school choice, please raise your hand. There's one person still coming in, so let me just ask again.
Sure.
Again, if there's anybody on school choice, I mean, in the audience on the Zoom, please let us know if you would like to speak on school choice by using the raise hand feature. Again, anybody in the Zoom for the school committee meeting who would like to speak about school choice, please use your raise the hand feature.
All right. All right, thank you very much. We will end that, the school choice public hearing, and we will move into our public hearing number one of the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School District FY twenty-three budget. To Michelle's point of order, Michelle, I'm going to ask you, do, because we've certainly been presented with this information several times, do we want to recap? Is that what you're saying is the, is the policy?
The policy says that during a public meeting, there will be a presentation of information given to the public so that they can comment on it, so.
Excellent.
I don't know, it's a little frustrating. I remind people of this every year, and I just am like, it's frustrating.
You're all set to do it.
Thank you.
But Vinnie's not presented it before. It's always presented during a public hearing.
Thank you.
Michelle, is the thought process there that even though we've seen it and it's been presented, that it hasn't been presented during the hearing for the people who are attending right here, right now?
Right, you can't assume that someone's watched seven other meetings. This might be the first time they're seeing the information.
Thank you, Michelle.
It's typical at any public hearing to have a presentation.
Thank you.
So, if you're waiting to comment on the public hearing for the budget, we're going to do a quick presentation first and then we will move into the budget comment period.
So, tonight, we're holding our first public hearing for the superintendent's FY twenty-three budget recommendation. Just to briefly talk about what this budget allows us to do, across the board, it allows us to maintain level services. There is not one single department or building that is receiving reductions next year. On top of that, this budget is allowing us to make, sorry about that, I put it on a rotation, I have to pause it. I think it's good. It is also allowing us to make incremental investments across the board. A lot of these items came about during COVID nineteen, keeps flipping, sorry.
Go faster.
Yeah. I only gave myself fifteen seconds to slide. I'm hitting pause. Okay, I'll talk quicker. It is also allowing us to make incremental investments across the board at the high school and middle school. It is allowing us to hire an additional social worker and meet the social emotional needs at those two locations. In addition, it is allowing us to reinstate and maintain our world language offerings at the middle school, and we've also seen an increase at the middle school for small group math, so the additional point four math teacher will allow us to address these needs. In addition, we have rearranged our ELL program. For those of you who don't know, that's the English Language Learners Program. We are switching out three tutors and then applying next year, two tutors and one full-time teacher. I'm going to have to keep doing that. In addition, it is allowing us to reinstate many positions that were cut in FY twenty-one, including our added district chair position. We will be bringing that back in at a point six F T E, as well as our payroll position. Again, that will be a point six F T E. In addition, it is allowing us to reinstate a full-time district-wide curriculum director with an additional point three F T Es, and it is also allowing us to reinstate ten percent of the athletic user fees that were also reduced during FY twenty-one. In addition, it is allowing us to address some technology issues we're seeing across the district. A lot of it revolves around security issues and amplifying our reaction to any infiltration around technology. In addition, it is allowing us to invest nearly seventy thousand dollars in new curriculum materials at the elementary schools and in addition, supply all seventh graders with iPads. With the influx of E and D, with E and D this year, it is also allowing us to have a one-time robust maintenance schedule and address our OPEB liability with an approximate two million dollar investment. So, this is a breakdown by school or location of our gross budget. You've heard me say it multiple times before, it comes in at approximately forty-three-point-one million. This is an increase of roughly four-point-three million dollars, or roughly eleven percent, but this is the gross budget. You can see from here, you have to remove your, all of your revenue sources. We have total offsets for FY twenty-three budget at approximately two-point-one million dollars, which is an increase of roughly twenty-two percent. From there, you remove all of our operating funding revenues, which includes items like state aid and regional transportation. These approximately are four-point-one million dollars for next year, an increase of roughly thirty thousand dollars. And then the last number to be removed before we apply the assessment is our E and D. You can see here, it is coming in at approximately three-point-one million dollars, which is obviously the main source of the funding we're using for the OPEB fund and the maintenance So, from there, you apply the regional agreement assessment of the split between Hamilton and Wenham, and we're coming in at roughly a four-point-one-five percent increase to Hamilton and a zero-point-one-five decrease to Wenham. So, from right there was our operating budget. We then move on to our debt service. For FY twenty-three, there are a total of four projects still open, the Cutler Roof and the Summer Two Thousand and Thirteen Projects, the Bucker Boiler and Winthrop Boiler along with the Winthrop Glass Project, as well as the Winthrop Sprinkler System and all of the capital projects from FY twenty-one. In total, our debt service payment will be approximately five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars, and you can see we apply the same split for both Hamilton and Wenham. In total, when you combine both our net operating assessment and our debt service assessment, combined, it is increasing by approximately eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars, or roughly two-point-six percent. So, that is ultimately our superintendent's FY twenty-three budget recommendation. This kind of just stays on a rotation of.
Thank you.
As you can, as you can.
All right. Thank you for that, Vinnie. At this point, I'd ask that if anyone is here to speak in the public hearing on the FY twenty-three budget, I'll start with if there's anyone in the room who would like to speak to that topic. If so, please approach the podium. Okay. And is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak on the FY twenty-three budget?
If you are on Zoom and you would like to speak about the FY twenty-three budget, please use the raise hand feature. Again, if you are on Zoom and you'd like to speak about the FY twenty-three budget, please use the raise hand feature.
Okay. Once we get you pulled up, if you could state your name and please spell your last name for us and then we'll get started and we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Okay, Melissa Brown. You just need to unmute, there you go.
Hi, sorry, I just had a quick question. It's, I, right now, I can't see or hear the meeting, is that intentional or no?
No, you can view the meeting on H W Cam. They livestream our meetings.
Okay, so where, where should I be looking to see this?
H W Cam, the website for the local cable.
Okay, so going into the Zoom is not what I'm supposed to do?
Only if you want to comment, it's used for the open comment.
All right, I'm so sorry to disturb you, I just, I just wanted to make sure I could see it correctly, sorry.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Not, not a problem, and actually, I'm, you know, really thrilled that people are watching, that's wonderful.
I'm just going to ask one more time.
Please do, and maybe let them know one more time that they can watch.
If you are on Zoom and you'd like to comment about the FY twenty-three budget, please use raise your hand feature, and if you're trying to view the meeting, you want to go to the H W Cam website and you can live, view the livestream.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, I, I'm looking at our agenda, it's a little funny, we have the Pledge of Allegiance now, and that's sort of because it's the beginning of our sort of regular meeting now as we end the public hearing, so I'm going to invite everyone before, but before we do that, I just want to remind everyone that after that, we will have an opportunity for citizen comments, so those people on Zoom are still there. Okay, so I ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now, we're starting the regular meeting.
And so, now we've come to the, the citizens comments portion, so if someone has a comment that they'd like to offer on any other topic, I invite you, if you are in the room, to approach the podium. And, Mr. Tracy, do we have someone on, anyone on Zoom that would like to offer a public comment?
It's open for citizen comments. If you're on Zoom and you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Most jumped up.
Okay, so at this point, we will close the Zoom link and those people who are listening can continue to watch on H W Cam. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the review of the school committee protocols. Those of you that have been watching our meetings know that we're going through them bit by bit. I actually didn't remember to ask one of my members to do this, and I will read the portion for this evening. As elected members of the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to ensure that the students of the district receive the best education possible. To that end, we hereby commit to the following in the conduct of our business. Item number two is, the superintendent and the school committee represent the needs and interests of all students in the district and place the students' interests above all others in their decisions while remaining within the limitations of a voter-approved All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. Jen, do you have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, before, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, before you make the motion, does anyone have anything from the consent agenda they would like to hold?
I'd like to hold item B.
Item B, okay. Anything else? Okay. All right, Jen, we're ready.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as written, except for item B, which we have put a hold on.
Second, second by Anna Seidzik. All those in favor? All right, and that is unanimous and the motion passes. Michelle, tell us about item B that you held.
So, I held this because I had a question about the overnight accommodations that I had emailed to Eric, so to me, in COVID times, we would not want four students sleeping in one room with two beds, which has been a prior experience, so I just asked him to clarify what their, what DECA's plans were this year.
So, I have Laura Wheeler here.
Okay.
She's representing DECA, so she can help us to answer some of the questions you might have.
Laura, please.
Thank you, Laura.
Sure, so this year, the, they are still allowing students, it's up to each school to decide what's right for them, so they are still having schools that are approved to have four students in a room with two beds. What I have put forth, the proposal was to have three students in a room, which would allow us the ability to have two beds and possibly a cot as well. It needs to be economical in order to do that, and to me, I think that made sense for it being, considering that they're going to be with students that they're normally with, they're with school, they're in a separate room, these are people that they would normally be eating lunch with, they would have their mask off at different times, so I felt that three was a more reasonable number than four to be in the room.
So, just for, is that, just for clarification, is it your proposal that you are hoping to make it three, or you, it really would be three?
No, I'm, the, the, what is there is the number, the numbers, it really has to do with the cost piece of it, is for three students to a room at max.
Thank you, just, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay. Other questions? Eric, did you have something?
I just wanted to know, Laura and I talked about this at length after Miss Bailey had reached out to me, and, and one of the things I was certainly concerned with was the price increase. It was a, it was about a hundred and ten dollars more to go down to two in a room with two beds, so that, that was a concern. I mean, it's, I think it's six hundred, over, over six hundred dollars per room, which is, you know, it's a substantial increase for families again on, on the, the original amount that was put out there and posted, so just, it was, that was another one of our considerations, I think it was important to add to the conversation. We don't, we generally don't offset all those costs, so they end up going back to the, to the students and parents.
And I will say that we wouldn't sacrifice money for safety. I believe that there really is no real safety difference in that sense. I think, you know, that there is obviously any risk right now, there's a risk going to school, there's a risk playing sports, there's a risk doing anything that we're doing, but I think that considering the other things that students are doing, that I think that three to the room fits with the, what I would feel comfortable leading and bringing students and feeling confident and saying that I'm keeping them protected. I don't think that there's any difference between two or three in the room that would make it reasonable for us to put that cost on parents.
Are there other questions? Jen?
My question had to do with transport, so going to the conference, you plan to take a bus and then private transport home? I thought we had decided that we weren't doing that anymore, that students had to take the bus there and back. Field trips.
Our policy does allow for the superintendent to make a decision, and what happens at the end of DECA competitions is parents generally go in to see their kids get the awards or online and then take them home from there rather than driving all the way back home, going back to school, get your kid, and then, so we've, we've done it that way several times.
I, I think I'm not, I know what, I think I know what Jen is talking about, is, would it, is this, in other words, would students be able to go with their own family members? Is that correct? Not with, in other words, the students aren't driving themselves back or?
Students are not allowed to take private transportation to the event whatsoever, so they would have to be picked up.
So, that's, it's, they would be only going with their own families, correct?
So, they do have to go home with a parent or other adult? They can't, for example, take the community? They can't, for example, take the commuter rail home in a big group?
Well, Laura does that for the stragglers.
We, it, it is in the transportation form that in the past, up through this year, we have allowed that. If that's something that we want to change for this year, then I can do that. But yes, traditionally, if a parent signs off, they have permission to take the commuter rail home, or to be picked up by their parent, or their parent can give permission to be, go home with another student. You know, it's a, it's a, you're over forty-eight hours where they're together. I mean, this is just not related to COVID, and when they're done, they want to be done. In order to get picked up, it would add on an extra hour or two. They wouldn't probably get home till late in the afternoon. We have, you know, academically focused students who'd like to get home and actually do work. I know that sounds crazy, but their, you know, their DECA time is done. And this has traditionally been the easiest way for them to get out of that conference faster. So you imagine that, you know, when the conference is over, students that are on buses are actually held longer. Students that are released by private transportation are released immediately. The rest of the students are sent back to holding areas, because the buses, because of Boston rules and regulations, in terms of how buses can line up, have to go up, I think Huntington Ave, I don't know, it's been a while since I've been in there, but there are rules, and then they get radioed to where they're at their hotels. So there's, there's easily at least an hour, if not two hours, of time where they would just be sitting in a room. And so that's, I think, where we have done, done that as a special permission for this trip in previous years.
I just mostly wanted to make sure we weren't violating our own policy.
All right. Jen, do you feel like you got your question answered?
Yes.
Okay, great. Anna?
How many total students do you expect are gonna go?
We have a hundred and four that have qualified. The, you know, I think part of the decision has to do with whether or not this is approved, if there was any change into the rooming. The, the pricing is higher than normal. I mean, really, it's just sort of my gut estimate. I think we'll net out to probably around seventy students who end up going, maybe less, maybe more, like sixty. But I don't actually have an idea. Until we had the full information, I didn't really want to press students to make any type of decision, or parents. I think it's better for them to have all of the information present.
So the reason I was asking, I was looking at the chaperone ratios again, which apparently seems to be my concern these days. So there are, it looks like the two of you are listed there, but I think that the requirements of the trip talk about.
It's one per ten.
Yeah, it's one for ten. So if we have seventy students, wouldn't that mean we need to add seven chaperones?
We always have one per ten. That is an absolute requirement, not just of our district, but also of DECA itself. And I literally cannot submit the registration unless I have named chaperones.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure we were in compliance with that.
Yeah, and, and just, it says, you know, to be determined because of the fact that I don't know what the number yet, so I don't know exactly how many chaperones.
Totally understood. And then to Jen's point, just to clarify, if students go home with, they go home privately, do they have to go with their parents, or could my kids go with Jen if Jen was gonna go down there?
Parents can give permission for them to go with another parent. They have to sign off on that.
Okay. Great, thank you. Michelle?
Yeah, so I personally, as a parent, wouldn't be comfortable with the three in the room, but my kid's not going, so it doesn't matter. But, so I would just encourage you to make available the option for people who want two to a room, that that could be arranged for a higher fee, if that's, if it's okay to have different fees for different kids. And then the other thing is, you know, my experience with DECA is that they were very strict about a lot of things at, at the event. And so I believe that they'll make the right choice if, you know, COVID goes up, that they would cancel if they need to, that they would make sure that, you know, the eating arrangements and everything is fine. So I'm happy with approving it, but I would encourage you to make it possible for parents to select a different sleeping arrangement.
I'll talk that over with Eric, I think, and we can discuss that. And I would just like to add that this year, I think it's right in there, it says that one of the biggest consider, I am on the board of directors, so part of the decision-making for the whole conference. And one of the things that was our big concern was the eating situation, which is why we have, even though they told us it wasn't possible, we're like, if you want us to come, it is possible. All meals will be takeout, students will be able to take them to their rooms. We will not be having large groups of students eating in, in an area unmasked.
Okay. Eric?
Also, one more piece of the puzzle. Boston does have a vaccination requirement right now, as of January fifteenth, so that is, is also a requirement for kids to attend.
And will that remain a requirement even if Boston rescinds that?
Is that a, is that a DECA thing, or?
It's, it, we have, I don't see that changing on our part. I don't see Boston changing that, because it's, it's, they just rolled it out. So it's the, it's the, it's, it just rolled out on January fifteenth is when it started, where you have to have at least one shot to go into certain places. And then I think it's the end of January, possibly the thirtieth, where they have to have two shots and show proof of vaccination. So what's happening is that because of the size of the conference and the fact that this is an optional trip, we do not fall under DESI guidelines or for school rules, which does allow for exemptions. We fall under Boston Convention rules, which means that we have no ability to do any exemptions, and March isn't that far off. I don't see that changing at any time coming up.
Just because we did require it for the ski trip, it would be consistent that we would require it for this.
I think at this point, being on the board of directors, I feel comfortable enough to say that even if Boston had changed it, we would not revert on that. I think that would be too hard. It would, you know, our registration is due next week. We, at this point, we agree with that, because it helps keep students safe, although it's heartbreaking for the students that are not gonna be able to go. I understand that this is not easy for some families, for some students who don't, you know, maybe don't have the choice to vaccinate. Maybe it's, you know, against medical guidelines for them. But in order to have this happen in person, what we're talking about doing at this time, I think that it's, it's essential that we hold to that. And that's what I would bring to the board of directors, if we had that discussion if for some reason Boston changed.
Do we have any other questions from the board? Okay. Are we ready to vote? Okay. All right, so, oh, actually, I think I need a motion.
I move that we approve the DECA state competition field trip request.
Second.
Second by Michelle Bailey. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And that is unanimous, and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
No easy choices right now, so I appreciate your time and consideration.
And I appreciate you coming and taking the time to answer our questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good luck.
Okay. Next up is the 2022-2023 course catalog.
Mr. Menegony.
And I think Mr. Menegony is gonna speak, give us some information ahead of that.
All right, good evening, everyone. I believe I provided you with an updated program of studies that reflected the changes we made in the health and wellness section. That's the only place where we made any changes or updates. And it was based on the feedback that we got from the last time we were here with the program of studies. And I think the spirit of what you were looking for, or course descriptions really, that reflect what we're actually doing in the classroom with the kids right now. And I know that the phrase abstinence plus was in there before. We've gotten rid of that, because that is not what we were doing. I've become much more educated on this topic than I ever thought I would. And in looking what, you know, abstinence plus means, I think we interpreted it a certain way, whereas when you read the literature about this, there is a very different definition out there in terms of how it's operationalized in front of the students. So I think that was an important thing to point out. We've removed that, and I'm hoping your review of the topics, especially in ninth grade, because that's where the traditional sexuality education rests. Hopefully, the topics in there speak to a comprehensive curriculum in terms of our approach, what the kids are gonna be learning, and how they're going to be learning it. Across the grade levels, it, sexuality education isn't explicitly something that we are teaching. You can see in tenth grade, we focus more on substance use and abuse. But certainly, as you move through each grade level, we are looking at the value of healthy relationships and healthy decision-making, which certainly will come back to sexual health. It's just done a little bit differently, I think, as the kids mature. I mean, they, they've sort of heard the traditional information in grade nine, and then you are applying it in more relational contexts as they get a little bit older. One thing I did find out is that currently, in the legislature, there is a bill that has been passed, and it's just kind of sitting there right now, in the House Ways and Means Committee, which would really call for all districts to teach a comprehensive sexuality education curriculum. I think that the benefit of the bill is that it spells things out that need to be taught in classrooms, and really calls for DESI to update the health frameworks, which really haven't been done since nineteen ninety-nine. That's quite a while ago. I did hear from our state representative about the status of that bill. They expected to come out of committee, but the, the way it works, she said it's, it could, it would be unlikely that it would be enacted to affect the next school year necessarily. So you never know how that's gonna play out. I know this, there's been an attempt in the past to pass a bill like this into law, it just hasn't happened, but it seems to move further along this time. Those are the, that's really the update that I have for you. I believe I also shared with you the ninth grade curriculum map, so that way you could see what the lessons are and what some of the materials are that are being used in class with the students.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Menegony? Okay, all right. Are we?
I have a comment.
Okay. Anna?
Mr. Menegony, I just wanted to say thank you, because I know that I've been really critical of this part of the course catalog for the last two years, and this is, in my opinion, really good work, and I'm glad that it's been included the way it is. I spent a lot of time looking at it, and I think it looks great, and I'm happy to hear that it is more accurate to what we're actually doing. And I'm glad that we've sort of gotten an update on Senate Bill twenty-four forty-one, twenty-five forty-one. I've been following that, too. So I think, I'm hopeful that makes it the law of the land. But in advance of that, this feels really good for our district to, to take these steps, and I just want to commend you and your staff, and, and everyone who worked to sort of make these changes. And I know I was really hard on everyone, but this is so important as a core value for our district in terms of inclusivity, but also the sections on consent are so important in terms of preventing rape culture and making sure that people feel safe. So thank you for making these changes, and I'm really, really happy to see us getting rid of abstinence plus, which I had said meant something really different than what I think people thought it meant. So thank you for all of that.
Yeah, no problem, and I certainly learned that. And I, so I would want to recognize Jess McGraw, who is the sixth to twelve curriculum leader for Health and Wellness, but also Jamie Hansen, Jim LaSala, and Matt Goran for providing some feedback and just letting us know this is really what happens in the grade nine classroom.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to also add, I did appreciate the, the ninth grade curriculum map. That was actually certainly above and beyond. It wasn't something that was required, but I actually found it quite helpful. I clicked and watched a few of those and looked a few of the lessons. It was, it was quite helpful to have that information, so thank you for including that. Okay. Michelle?
Yeah, just a quick question, Brian. I did look at the DESI, their frameworks for wellness, and it, it did say nineteen ninety-nine, which was amazing, but, whatever. But it did say something about that they are researching, updating the frameworks. Do you know when they are going to, or? I thought I saw, I thought I saw twenty twenty-one in there, but?
Yeah, the, the information that I have was tied specifically to that bill, which was going to require DESI to update the health frameworks really immediately, probably because they recognize the fact that it's been over twenty years since that has happened. The, the work has been done to start to update them, but it, it, you know, it has either sort of died, or paused, or has lost someplace, and I haven't heard anything recently about what they plan to do with that.
So they're waiting, they're waiting to?
Perhaps they're waiting, perhaps they're waiting for that, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. I think we need a motion to adopt.
I move that we adopt the Hamilton Wenham Regional High School Course Catalog as presented.
Second.
Second by Anna Seidzik. Is there further discussion? Nope. Okay, all those in favor? All right, and that is unanimous, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay. So next up is our vote on the school choice for the 2022-2023 school year. Eric, do you have any other information for us that you'd like to share? I know we've talked about it a few times.
Nothing, nothing beyond what was originally presented. I, I would, at this point, recommend that we continue the program under the, the same guise that the principles will determine, based on open seats, without creating new sections. And that's basically how we've been operating for the past, I think, three, four years now. So realistically, it's, it's a, it's either an accept or not accept, and then we can make a vote.
Okay.
So it would be accept for the middle school, high school, not accept for elementary school? Just to clarify.
So one of the things that I went back and read in the law is, you're basically just accepting to be a part of the school choice program or not. And then realistically, we manage it based on openings. And I don't, I don't know that, in my time, I've, we've never opened for elementary, generally, middle and high school, mostly high school. We've, we've opened for the, the middle school. One time, we, we had a very small fifth grade class come up and, and opened up for that point, I think it was two, two, two years ago, maybe three years ago now, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so Anna?
Thank you. This is a question that we received from a member of the public, and just in the interest of sort of public discussion. Eric, the question from the public was, how many school choice participants receive special education services, and is there a way to quantify the cost to the district of that? I think that the member of the public asked the question, would benefit from hearing it answered.
Sure, thank you. I, I think it's a great question. We were asked that question in the budget session last night, and I think it's important to continue to answer it. Seventy-seven students in the program now, thirteen of those kids, of those students are on IEPs of varying degrees, mostly getting academic support. So when you look at services each of the students needs per their IEP, many of those students that come in through the choice program just need academic support, really not costing us as a district any extra money, because those, even if we took the child out of that program, that program would still exist. So we're just filling a seat that happens to be available. Now, there are kids who have more extensive needs, and there are outlays of capital for, say, a medical issue, or something that's, that's kind of larger scale, if you will. And in some cases, we cost share with the district that the student comes from, not all, but many of them. In other cases, we receive reimbursements through the state in our annual reimbursements, with some of our special ed costs, again, not all. But the majority of those, those costs are almost unquantifiable. And the, the reason is because if you take a child and you looked at their schedule, seven classes, each of those classes has a teacher assigned, some TA assigned. So there's a, you know, if you want to look at it from a price tag, well, that teacher has a value, and that TA has a value. And that T, you know, take that, those values, say it's a hundred thousand divided by the number of students, then you, you're at a per pupil cost. Well, the reality is, when you pull that kid out of those classes, that cost remains the same, so it doesn't really change the amount of money we're spending to do what we do. I mean, and, and as long as we stay with filling kind of the seats on the bus and not creating new classes specifically to service, you know, forty, if we brought in forty ninth grade students, we would be, bring, we'd need more sections and more teachers. So we're just filling open spaces annually.
Hold on, I actually have a follow-up question. You said there are thirteen special education students out of the seventy-seven. How does that percentage compare to the general Hamilton Wenham population? Is it a similar percentage of special education students?
It's actually less.
Lower, yeah.
The, the percentage for kids who are school choice, who are on IEP is sixteen percent. The percentage of kids in the district, our own students on an IEP, or being serviced on an IEP, is nineteen point two percent. So a little bit less.
Thank you. Michelle Horgan?
Thank you. And what's the number, the revenue that the choice students bring into the district every year?
Great question. We, we do receive a, a, a small amount of money that's based on a nineteen ninety-three law. It was set in nineteen ninety-three at five thousand dollars per student, as it, and has never changed. That number's never changed. So we have ten kids come in, we receive fifty thousand dollars from this, from, basically from the state, they deal the transaction, so it's a fixed cost. We don't have any ability to set. So it's a fixed cost. We don't have any ability to say, no, we want three thousand dollars more. We, it's it's fixed by the law.
And so last year, can I ask this question of any? Last year, how much did the choice students, the revenue, how much did they bring in the revenue?
Seventy-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Great, thank you.
So, so can I clarify that? So when you just stated that, that's not easily divisible by five thousand, because we received additional revenue for some students, because we had a, they may have had an IEP cost. So so I think a lot of members of the public believe that if an IEP student comes in, that somehow it costs us money. But in fact, there is some reimbursement, so, yeah.
Yep, that seventy-five thousand is above the five thousand per student.
Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions? All right, I don't think we have a motion on the floor, I don't think.
I move that we accept the school choice program for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Second?
Second by David Polito. Is there further discussion? Okay, looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor? All right, and that is unanimous, and the motion passes. Okay. Uh, next up on new business, Eric, I think you're going to give us an outline of the Cutler principal search.
All right.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura. I felt it important to get this out now rather than wait, because I think it's important for parents to know what direction the district is going on. I've actually had a conversation yesterday with a parent about this and and told him to check the school committee agenda. So this is my my first draft stab at the process that we would follow. Similar to to the previous processes we've used, a couple of kinks we're just trying to figure out is is in the section of, you know, what we do with finalists, the timing of the day. So I just have to figure out, right now, we're looking at bringing people in in the late morning and keeping them into the evening so that all the groups get to interview each of the candidates. I think it's important for the teachers to meet the candidates individually versus the parents also getting an opportunity to meet and ask questions. So that's what I was trying to do with with this part of the schedule. So essentially, we would meet with the staff. My intention is in that first week, I think it's a Wednesday, the ninth, to try and get in and and have an open discussion with the Cutler staff, what qualities they're looking for. And then also do the same with the parents that evening, just have an open session. Come, come tell us about what you think the qualities are. Develop that into our advertisement that we will put out through various sources. We use School Spring, most, most, that's our usual posting place. And then we'll also take advantage of the mass superintendents and mass, M A S S, which is the M S A A. Keep changing their name here. They are the School Administrators Association, so they encompass all elementary through high school. And then, of course, we we also advertise out to the staff. So we'll get our submissions early March, the fourth is the the target date. And then review the elementary, with the elementary director of teaching and learning, review that kind of, say, twenty-five resumes come in, kind of filter through qualified candidates. And then our intention is to interview six to ten. I mean, that's that's a usual number when you start interviewing people. And depending on what that number looks like, this part of the schedule might adjust a little bit, but we're looking at three to five candidates over a two-night period with the committee. And then contacting two or three finalists that would come back and run through this process, the next process, the finalists over a three-day period. And also giving people the opportunity to to talk to each of the candidates, get some information, ask some questions. So more of an open conversation than a formal interview. Site visits if we can, depending on schools and their COVID policies. I won't know that until we get to that point. And then I will do reference checks on each of the candidates, between three and five reference checks. And then planning to make an appointment right around that first week of of April, which I think is a a good time to nail that down. Because that's a, it's, people are already starting to advertise positions. And then underneath is just the process. I tried to outline it in a process, like advertising, meeting with the faculty, reviewing credentials, bringing the pool down to size, developing an interview committee. And right now, we're looking at director of teaching and learning, an elementary principal, three reps from the faculty, a member of support staff, and then three parent caregivers. And that would be a pretty sizable committee, but I think, I think doable, not not a, not overly large. And then they'll do the interviews, they'll process the interviews, we will work with them on the questions, validate the process by explaining to them kind of the rules of asking each person the same questions, et cetera. And then candidates will make an opening statement, take on the questions, and then have the opportunity to have a closing statement. And then the the interviewers will will have a tally sheet that they can determine, and then they'll sort, as a group, sort out the top finalists. And those finalists will run through the finalist process and then give people the opportunity to really just have an open conversation with with the finalists. And then do the follow-up work of of, you know, checking people out and verifying everything and then making the appointment. And the start would be on July one, twenty twenty-two. That's a the new, start of the new school year. So that's, that's the target for this position.
Okay. Questions?
Not a question, just a typo, I think. Under finalist three, that row, that I'm pretty sure should be March twenty-third, not February twenty-third.
Oh, yeah. Yes, thank you.
Oh.
Okay.
It's that whole mass of threes and twos all together.
Two, two, two.
Two, two.
Thank you.
Two, two. Two, oh, two, two is coming up.
Yep.
It is, on a Tuesday.
Other questions?
My other question is the form with the parent caregivers and staff, is that going to be offered via Zoom?
What?
Is that going to be offered via Zoom?
I believe we can do both. Honestly, my my intention is, in thinking about the building, having people at the building, having, I'd like to have the candidates in person, in case people want to come in person, but then also do a a Zoom opportunity as well for questions. So I I don't see any issue with that. I think it's, I think it's easily doable with the technology we have.
I think that's a great idea. I would just make the request that those Zoom recordings not be published until after every finalist.
Yeah, right.
Because at the last set of interviews, like, the person who went first, the next person got to hear all the questions that were going to be asked in advance. And I I just felt that gave the the second person an an advantage over the first, so I don't want that to happen again.
Some of the, some school systems actually give the candidates, they'll ask the candidates to come twenty minutes early, and they'll give them the the questions ahead of time, twenty minutes ahead of time. I debated with that. I mean, I I really want to see how people can think on their feet and see, you know, we're looking for somebody who's done the job. We're not, we're really not looking for for somebody brand new, but we're going to entertain the whole pool and see, see what we can come up with.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right. Michelle Horgan?
I don't know if it's, but based on, I guess if you had a crystal ball, and based on last year's attempt at this, and now this year, do you see anything different? Or do you have your finger on the pulse to just to see what's happening or know what's happening out there?
In conversations with friends of mine who are both superintendent, assistant superintendents, and also principals, the pools are smaller. You know, fewer people want to jump into the to the administrative role, which is just fine. I mean, the the two current hiring processes I know that are going on now for school administrators, brought in for a principal twenty and for an assistant superintendent, twelve. So those are not huge pools to choose from. And that's why, one of, this is kind of the secondary reason why I want to start this now rather than put it off, because the further we get towards May, we'll be in trouble. I'd like to have somebody in, settled, negotiated, and ready to go for July one.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. It's help, helpful and great, great to have that in front, that in front of us, laid out for us. I am not sure that we, do we really have any finance and operations budget items with that?
We left an opportunity if if the committee needed to discuss anything.
All right.
But there's no formal presentation.
No.
We voted the tentative.
No, any budget? Thoughts?
I love the budget.
Okay. All right, moving right along to the review of the face coverings policy.
Well, as we know, COVID continues to rage. At this point, I I think we're still in the position of leaving it in place and not making any changes. I will show you, I think, something that's important. It's over here. So this is our usual chart that we have that shows the the increases that we've had since we've come back.
Can you make it a little bit larger?
Yep.
Is this exhibit one or is two?
This is the first exhibit.
This is one.
Uh, second, second exhibit.
I thought you were saying something updated. I'm sorry.
The first exhibit.
Okay, I, we have it. I'm sorry. I thought you were updating something. Okay, yep.
So the numbers are up still, little, a little dump down in Hamilton, but Wenham is up by thirty cases. And then overall, is really up there, thirteen point nine percent positivity over the past two weeks. Our numbers skyrocketed when we came back. I still haven't gotten this last week because there's still pool testing. So those are, those are the numbers of cases. We got as high as forty cases in the Bueker School. So that will show in this next round that once the nurses get that stuff reported. And then our pool testing has picked up quite a few. We've been running between three and five pools that are positive in each school since we've gotten back. It's been pretty consistent. There've been some inconsistent pools. Uh, Brian, I think, what was today's, one, one this week. So you're starting to see that drop over time that we would expect. And then these are new vaccination numbers that I just got from the nurses, and that's what we're looking at overall in the the district by school. New numbers on there. Central office, I actually adjusted, I made in red, because there was a person who was being counted both in central office and somewhere else that should have been counted only in central office, and that's my error. They were not counted in central office and should have been. And then we have the new numbers for Bueker, Cutler, and Winthrop in there. Bueker's sixty-five point four percent, Cutler sixty point five percent, and Winthrop fifty-three point two. And those are kids with both shots.
Oh.
So that's, that's the only data we're we're currently reporting, kids with both of the shots, so. And then one other thing to show, this is just an example. Since we've gotten back, we've been keeping this data, and we'll make it a little bit larger here. We've been keeping the data about absences since we got back, and in red are the student absences. So that first column on the left is two hundred and sixteen students. That was that first day back. So so a huge portion of kids, and the blue is is representative of the teachers, and that's been pretty consistent in the early to mid twenties across the way, and started this week coming down along with the 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 student cases. We're starting to see that trend down. And then you can look at it by school as well. I'll make that even a little bigger so that we can take a quick peek at our schools. So Bueker, red of students, blue on the staff. So you can see the numbers got up close to forty and then dumped out, and then they bumped back up again. Cutler had one big spike, and then they're heading down consistently. Uh, Winthrop had, also, they were earlier, they had a spike earlier than Cutler. It was interesting. It went Winthrop, Cutler, Bueker. And then both the middle and high schools showed early bumps right off the bat, second day we're in. Uh, we were pool testing on that day, that Tuesday, if you remember, and and we picked up two big spikes in the, both the high school and the middle school early on. High schools dropped out and then bumped up a little bit and continued now. There's a trend downward in both middle and high schools, so. Just some interesting data I thought you might want to look at that we've been tracking just for the first few weeks of school since we've been back after vacation.
So on that day, the high school has what, roughly four fifty? And you had almost a hundred and twenty-five absent.
Yeah, they have four hundred and eighty-eight students.
You're talking about a lot of students.
Their highest day was a hundred and seventeen, the second day back. Now, not every single bit of this is COVID, but these are absences right, right away when we came back.
I mean, there weren't vacation overs because it was sixty-eight the day before. You wouldn't vacation over coming one, yeah, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so numbers, numbers have really been high, but starting to show that downward trend.
Cross your fingers.
Back to this, our policy, I think, should just leave in place.
Yeah.
State policies are still in place till the twenty-eighth of February. They re-up the date.
Um, I, oh, go ahead. I was going to ask a question, but you guys go. Jen?
Are we still allowing students to wear cloth masks, despite CDC guidance?
Um, yeah, yeah, we have, we have, probably not as many, because we supply, we bought, we got, we actually got and bought supplies of KN ninety-fives and N ninety-fives. So there are a lot more of those. Like, if you look over by the door there, that's all that's theirs. So that's all that's now available for kids to use. So for instance, you go to the high school, you'll see more of the the blue surgical masks, the black ones like this, or or the KN ninety-fives versus if you go to the elementary, mostly because they're so tiny, they are, they are still using cloth masks at at the lower levels. And we we um, we purchased the smallest masks we could, which are pediatric masks that are the the greenish-blue like Michelle's wearing, that that are pediatric size. And they, they are available at every single elementary school for any, any kid that wants it. But generally, parents send in cloth masks or KN ninety-five masks, even even for the little ones.
Thank you. Anna?
Um, with the new testing guidance that's coming out from the state, I don't know if we want to talk about that at all, at all. But I'm curious, because my reading of that guidance says that in order to participate in the new program, you either have to continue testing asymptomatic or continue pool testing. So I know that, I mean, just based on those numbers, it seems like the pool testing is still actually picking up a significant number of cases. Has there been any conversation about what happens if we adopt the new, sort of the elimination of test and stay, and we accept the weekly at-home test? Would we still be looking to continue pool testing here in our district?
Yes.
Okay.
I was actually going to do that in my superintendent's report, but I can do it now.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Either one, I can do it now or give you a note kind of overview. It's brand new. Like, we, we found out about it Wednesday. We had, we found out about it Wednesday morning at eight-thirty. We had a webinar at Wednesday at at one o'clock. And then they said, we need to know your numbers by Friday morning. So we scrambled today to get all the information from C I C and the state. And have not signed up yet. We intend to sign up, but we we don't sign up till tomorrow. But we had to get the information out to the teachers so we could get them to consent. They have to actually consent and agree to not only, if you're going to get the test each week from the state, you have to consent to 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 take it and also agree to tell your school nurse if you're positive. That's a, that's a requirement of the state, that's not us. So what, how the program works is Friday morning, Tom Geary and I will go through the chart. I actually sent it out, and I was on the phone with them earlier. I sent it out earlier today to all the staff. We'll get a base number of staff members who are interested and will consent. We'll use that number, plus a little bump, to to submit our count to the state. And that will give us the first round of free tests that will come to the staff. We'll do the same thing for the students. We've got a little bigger window for the students, and they'll be staggered. So the deliveries will come, the end of next week, we should see the first staff delivery. And then that would be given out on Monday, the thirty-first. And then every, every other week is the delivery schedule. So staff first week, students next week, and then they just continue to rotate. What happens is you get two tests, so that will take you through two weeks. And what we have to do now is do the work of logistics. Tom Geary spent the entire day working with principals to figure out what the logistics of this looked like because one of my requirements was do not put any more work on the nurses. This is actually intended to remove contact tracing and test and stay off of their plates, which would be huge. And so they came up with logistics today to be able to figure out how to hand it out and work it out through each of the schools. And it'll depend on who wants them. We might only get fifty percent of the people in the district that consent to it. But they are free. There's no, we're not paying for them. And the beauty is because our pool testing, we connected up with CIC, that's the company that manages our pool testing. We were very fortunate that they're also the people that are sending and delivering the goods. So we'll sign up through the site. We're already working with them, already connected to them. We just go into the site and put in the numbers. People can add in along the way. It's not like, it's not like one time, oh, you only got a hundred tests. So people can choose to jump on board along the way until they shut the program off. But right now, it looks like it's gonna go through February at least.
So if we're gonna continue the pool testing, which is one of the things the state's talking about, I noticed in the guidance, they had sort of a schedule of if you have, if you are participating in pool testing and you have a take-home test, is there gonna be some sort of schedule that goes out to the parents to say, you know, your kid's being pool tested on Tuesday? Do your take-home test on Thursday or Friday? So all that's being worked out, and parents will know what they're supposed to do.
Some of the stuff we were working on today. So each of the schools, well, many of the schools pool test on different days. So earlier in the week, we have some schools, and then the end of the week, Thursday, we have the Bueker School. So we would send each school information aligned with their program. So, okay, your kid's gonna get tested in the pool on Thursday. And our suggestion is Sunday or Monday to test again. The interesting thing is you do not have to be in the pool testing program to receive a free test. So any student or staff, whether they're pool testing or not, can sign up for the free test still. Which is, again, it's helpful. I mean, we gave out rapid tests, and we got a lot of positives through the rapid tests that we gave out, just to the staff. Not a hundred, but more than, people would have just come in the door the next day with COVID, so.
Great. Thank you. Michelle, go ahead.
And then obviously, those that have already tested positive for COVID for ninety days, they would be removed from this program?
Generally, they can still, they can still test with a rapid. PCR is the one they say not to keep doing because they're super sensitive. But I'll use myself as an example. I tested positive, and five days later, I didn't. I tested positive twice, and then on the sixth day, actually, I tested negative with a take-home test, so. It's, yeah, they say that people can still test positive even on some of the rapid antigen tests, sixty to ninety days. But we're seeing, we're seeing, well, you know, the rule changed, the five days you can come back. We're seeing people on day seven still testing positive, and in some cases, sending them back home. And only because nurses have decided that because they're still symptomatic. But, you know, and then they bring them back in the next day and test them again. So we have the ability to do what we need to do to manage this. And again, our nurses are angels. They are amazing and really continue to go above and beyond to take care of our kids and our staff.
Thank you. Michelle?
So I just want to understand exactly. So if we participate in this program, then if Michelle is the student in a class and I'm sitting next to her, there'll be no notification sent home any longer. Is that correct?
Right. That's the state, the state is saying no more contact tracing to take the load off of the school nurses and no more test and stay. Essentially, the test and stay, I'm sorry, the test and stay would take, be kind of swapped out with the free test. They would have two free tests, one to use every week.
To follow up on that, though, if you're still in the pool test, that pool is still notified that there's a positive in the pool.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's all the same.
Yeah, the reports that we get from Eric will still be the same.
Yeah.
But I now, as a parent, will no longer know if my child was sitting next to a person who tested positive.
Correct.
So I just want to be sure that we understand what the downside of this is. That, you know, now, when you're notified, right, it gives you a heightened awareness around looking for symptoms. So now, instead of waiting for that notification, you need to be hypersensitive around the symptoms all the time, so.
And conversely, you have a test at home so that if you are hypervigilant, you don't have to worry about finding one or paying thirty-nine dollars or whatever.
Yeah. And we really follow up, our nurses, again, follow up well. Like, they don't let very much get by. I don't know how they do it. But they, once they, they know, they can, they trace it down pretty quickly. And we still are not showing school transmission. Most of this is caught by parents at home. They say, oh, my kid's got the sniffles. Now they'll be able to just use the test and find out. And as many of us have learned, the tests, the antigen, rapid antigen tests are useful when people have symptoms. You know, that's one of the, one of the things that we'll put in our communications home to say, if your child is experiencing symptoms similar to a cold, because that's what we still hear from parents. Well, I thought they had a cold, so I sent them to school. But so then now they can just test, just test at home and make the determination. Our parents have been very good about, about kind of letting nurses know, okay, I'm gonna keep my son home. Or, you know, we get a pool, and the nurses seem to know before the pool results come back, say, oh, I know who that is. So even though they still go back and retest the pool to figure out who it is, they generally know based on conversation with parents and kids.
One thing I think, you know, when you send that communication out, I think it would be important or would be helpful to encourage people to participate in the pool testing because where the rapid test is going to confirm symptoms. The pool testing is gonna find you if you're asymptomatic before you need, before you become symptomatic. And that's actually, in some ways, more critical because if you're having symptoms, you'll just stay home. But if you're not having symptoms and you're positive, you're circulating in the pool, so.
And we are seeing a number of cases with zero symptoms and frustrated parents, like, why do I have to take my kid home? Well, they tested positive, and, you know, the pool testing is sensitive. It's gonna pick it up even if the child isn't showing any signs of sickness, so.
And just think of it as a perk. Like, it's really hard to find tests right now. Guess what? If you send your kid to school, they can get a free one in the pool. It's free. Free.
Well, and it's, I mean, just, it's, it's really about equity, right? That shouldn't, it's not just about finding it. It's about that if you do find it, they're expensive.
Yeah.
You know, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you have, well, we'll move right on. And do you have other updates for us?
Yep, let me just switch pages here. I already talked about the change in testing. That was the big item on my superintendent's report this week. So that's all set. We will sign up at some point tomorrow. That's the first deadline. So once we get the feedback back from teachers that was sent out this afternoon, we'll put that first number through and get started, get our first shipment moving. We will not stop doing contact tracing and the other things that we're doing until we start, we actually give out a set of tests. So nurses want to, they were very clear about that we're not gonna do that until we give out that first round, so. I think it's important to let the public know there's an opportunity for grades seven, eight, nine, and ten. We are bringing in a speaker. Her name is Katie Greer. I've seen her twice now. She's excellent. She does a great job with younger kids, too, doing internet safety and social media. If you ask any of the principals where our issues pop up from, they generally are from social media. So Katie's gonna come in and do some work with our kids on the twenty-sixth. We also have an opportunity for parents to meet with Katie that night. That'll be in the high school auditorium, the Farini. What time is that, Brian? What?
We're gonna do it on Zoom.
Oh, we're gonna do it on Zoom. Okay, so, sorry. We're gonna do that on Zoom. Thank you for being here. So it's on the twenty-sixth of January, and information will come out from the principals. And parents, any parents that want to join can join. Katie is, at least she's a former state trooper. She's kind of been in the mix of things and has done a lot of work in this area for years. We used to connect with her through the local district attorney. And we think it's a great opportunity for our kids to continue to help them to understand. You know, I was in an art class today in the Bueker School, and one of the kids, I mean, the technology class in the Bueker School today, and their assignment was, when you post on social media, what's good to post and what's bad to post. So even groups of third graders were working on that today. So it's good to see that we're continuing to kind of beat that drum. Then last night, we did a budget presentation to the public. Thank you, Julia, for coming, and many of you for being on the livestream. It wasn't hugely attended in person, but we've been told by HW CAM there were approximately sixty people on the video during the presentation, which is good. We were able to answer some great questions from the public and really open up the budget and explain some of the ways we're trying to be more transparent. That presentation is available on the district website. And what we've been telling people is if you have questions, you can email Jen Caulfield or myself, and we will compile those questions and get them published as well on the website. So most of the questions we've had, we've been able to answer publicly so far, so. It was a good opportunity. I just think it's important for us to continue to help people to understand the budget process, the OPEB situation, which I think is not so easy to understand sometimes. We were able to explain that in depth last night. And thank you to Vinnie for spending another night out with me and, no dinner, sorry. You know, but we, you know, we'll continue to connect with the towns and the community and see if we can continue to help people understand the direction we're going. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Eric? Okay, committee reports. Capital Finance?
We haven't been able to meet since the last time we reported in. We're hoping to meet next Thursday. So hopefully, we'll have more to report at our next meeting.
Thursday or Tuesday?
I thought it was Thursday. Benny?
Twenty-seventh, I believe.
Which is Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
It was the last email.
I knew it was a tea day, but I wasn't sure which one.
Thank you for that. And I do know that we've made things challenging on the scheduling front for you guys, and sorry about that. Policy?
We met on Tuesday, and we had, we were supposed to meet earlier but got caught up in the website issue. But we had a good meeting on Tuesday. We finalized what we believe will be the flag policy, and we'll be bringing that to... Eric, what meeting did you say you wanted to put that on?
It's on the February third.
February third, flag policy. For the policy subcommittee, we invited in our district council to just sort of expedite the process, make sure that we had all of the questions answered all at one time. And then after that, we did a lot of work on the J section. I don't know how many we did, what, ten, fifteen, Michelle? We just...
The most we've done so far.
Yeah, we cruised. We had a new, a new high score in policy subcommittee on Tuesday. So we're moving on.
Thank you. Negotiations. We had a meeting yesterday. We have not met in a long time. So we had a meeting yesterday. It was, we met with the representatives from the AFSCME, the custodial union. Really was just a meet and greet to make sure all the players knew who everybody was. And we did set up a schedule for negotiating the contract. And that was important. It feels good to have all those dates on the calendar. And as David reminded us, several times, always better to put everything on the calendar, easier to take it off than it is to put another one on. So we feel good about that.
You're picking up on all my vernacular. You gotta start using specifically vague now.
Yeah, specifically vague. Exactly. Perfect. Okay.
And we also talked about the regional agreement.
Oh, and we, yes. Yes, thank you. We... Michelle, do you want to speak to that?
I was gonna say, we talked about the regional agreement, and the task is with you to talk to our lawyer.
Exactly. And I've already, so in our, the committee decided we're gonna go forward and speak to, you know, formally speak to our attorney, Mark Terry. And I have reached out to him, and he and I have a conversation scheduled for Monday morning to go through Section One. So, all right, I think that's about it on that. I don't have a ton, I think, that we've not covered on my chair's report. We did, I do think it's important to note that we did have the quintuple board meeting since we've last met last Thursday with the select boards from Hamilton and Wyndham and the FinComs from both Hamilton and Wyndham. At that meeting, Hamilton presented sort of on the highlights of their, or some points, key points of their budget. Wyndham was not able to present their highlights at this time. They weren't quite prepared to present that at this time. I will say that Hamilton expressed concern to us about their ability to meet the sort of educational needs, I guess, in our tentative budget. I don't know if anyone else feels like we need to say anything else about that meeting, but that was there. And then I do want to mention, we do have the DEI workshop is on Saturday at nine? AM?
Can I offer a point of order on that, a point of information? I don't see that posted on our website. Did that get lost in the shuffle?
No, it was posted back in December, I think. It's also in the box, too, so.
I don't see it there. I'm looking right at our website. I know, I remember it being posted, too.
Yeah, it was definitely posted in December.
I've looked at it recently.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I looked at it a couple days ago.
You see what I say? I didn't just imagine that it disappeared, right?
It's there.
You see it?
I don't see it.
I see it.
What's it under?
On the twenty-seventh. Yep, it's there.
Okay, so it's just not under our agenda posting area under school committee? That's great that it's there. I'm relieved. I was gonna say, are we in trouble because it's not where the other things are?
It is there, and I do think, Anna, it is there, and I feel like we've certainly, it's, I see it, and it's absolutely, in terms of open meeting law, it's posted.
Yeah.
I do think that you're correct. I do believe at one point it was also listed under the school committee. I wonder if in the website issue it disappeared.
I don't even know what you're talking about, under school committee.
So under, on our website, under school committee, and then under agendas, meetings, and handouts, it's not there.
That's not the official posting location.
But I do agree with you, and I think it was, at one point, it was there as well. But it is indeed on the calendar, so it is.
Okay, and that's at nine-thirty, is that right?
I think nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Nine AM. To eleven-thirty.
Okay. All right. Do we have topics for future meetings? Michelle?
Is it possible for us or us to tell the public at the next meeting how many people have pulled papers for a school committee?
We absolutely can do that, yeah.
Yeah, I think. Thank you.
Want that on next meeting?
What was that?
Do you want that on next meeting?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's just a factual bit of information.
So one thing that Michelle and I talked about last year after town meetings was that the prior year, she and I had set up a lot of meetings with different community groups to talk about our budget. And that really is something that we think is valuable because, so I was, I don't know that it's at the next meeting, but it may be at the next, next meeting, that we should really talk about, like, how we're going to reach other smaller groups just to have informational sessions and then figure out who's going to do that so that, you know, we try and cover everybody, you know? We go to the COA, we go to parents, we go to preschool parents, we go to school parents, we go to...
Thank you for that.
People who've never been parents, people who don't want to be parents.
Right, thank you. That's really helpful. Let's...
I think there was a, I think there was a Google sheet. It must be in some of our agendas of who we contacted. And everyone was assigned.
Yeah, that would be actually, and I can reach out to the two of you to get that information. That would be helpful. And then Eric, we can think about whether, whether that makes sense to be, I mean, it seems to me that sooner rather than later to get that on an agenda.
It was before COVID hit, so we did get a couple in.
Yeah.
It was, it was, so it was February, March.
It was like February, March, but then because we had no time, we didn't do it in April, May, but, um.
We have the final hearing on the tenth. So maybe do it that, that night?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
After the final vote?
That makes a lot of sense, yeah, then we can, okay. All right, um, all right, other topics? Okay. Um, all right, well, um, I am, then, I think we are ready to, we have an executive session. So I think we're ready to, um, uh, adjourn into executive session, which I believe is a roll call vote, is that correct? All right, so I move that we adjourn into executive session for purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the AFS CME, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the HWEA, and not to return to open session.
Second.
Yeah.
Did you do the chair declares?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it again, okay? I move that we move adjourned to executive session for purpose number three, to discuss strategy with collective bar- for, with respect to collective bargaining for the AFC, SCME, and discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the HWEA, and not to return to open session. And, uh, discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the committee and the chair, so declares.
Second.
Second by Anna Seizic. Um, it's a roll call vote, David?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Dana, yes? Anna?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
All right, and we are adjourned into executive session.